We would like to call the regular meeting of October 7th to order. We have a quorum absent. Or not here at this time is John Newman and Trustee Larisha Thornton. If you could stand, if you're able, for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll remain standing for a moment of silent prayer, please. The first item on our agenda are the firefighter presentation by, of honors, by our chief, Densmore.
Good evening, everyone. We are here tonight in celebration of firefighter Michael Wasnisky. He has completed his probationary period with us. So he is up to date on all current Uppsland Township policies and procedures and is counts on the floor, and we're happy to have him aboard. So I would like to give him his badge tonight. Actually, his dad is here with him and he'll be presenting his badge. And his dad is a firefighter in Sumter Township. So we'll have him present his badge to him and we'll give him the oath and we'll carry on. Eric, can you raise your hand for him?
It says, "I will never, I will never allow my personal feelings nor danger self-determine me from my responsibilities as a firefighter. I will at all times respect the property and rights of all men and women and laws of my country, country members, which will I serve with."
I, I swear.
Very good. Turn it off you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I say I'm happy to be here. Thank you guys for the opportunity to work here and I'm happy to serve the Township of Uppsland.
Thanks.
Steve.
Thank you.
Number five is just the 2026 budget overview, overview by Giovanna Neal, the accountant. What did I forget?
Move agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Salmo Peterson.
Support.
Aldridge to approve the agenda. Any objections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Good evening. Giovanna Neal, accounting director. I'd like to give a brief overview of our 2026 draft budget. The things that I'm going to be going over tonight. Things that I'll be going over tonight will be the millage rates, tax revenue, state shared revenue, basic expenditure assumptions, pension, OPEB, which is our retirement healthcare, capital projects, transfers, budget amendments, and a general fund, fund balance. The board did approve our tax rates, our tax millage rates at the September 16th meeting. I just put a copy in here just to have it on file so you'll know where we got some of our numbers that we're going to do some of the calculations with. They also put a historical millage rate and the new rates spreadsheet on here for you. So we have the millage rates for tax roll of 22, which is our 23 revenues. Those, and then we have the 23 tax roll, which are 24 revenues, the 24, which are 25, and then our 25, which are 26. So there's four columns down there for you to see the differences in how the millages changed each year. Is there any questions on the millages? I'm not going to go over each one of them unless there's a specific question. You guys approved those already, so.
I think just to note, they've been reduced every year, the total millage.
Yes, the, the total amounts. So our tax revenue budget overview, we're going to look at the millage levies and the budget assumptions. So the fire pension and the fire healthcare, we do do a millage rate on those. We do try to keep those to the amount of the actuarials annual determined contribution rate that we should have. I did have to increase that and did ask for the board to increase that this year, which you did, and we still, our overall totals are still lower than last year. We did have headly rollback. That is actually when the annual growth on the existing properties is greater than the rate of inflation and there's a headly rollback. It reduces the millage rates. We only had to take the millage rate of .9953 on the general fund. All the other millages were brand-new voted on, which so we did not have to take the headly rollback this year on those. If there is a headly rollback next year, we will have to reduce those millage rates next year. The board also decided to increa- decrease the police millage, the law enforcement millage. By, we did approve, the board, the residents township approved a 5.7 millage and the board approved to lower it to a 5.0. So that is a significance.
Well, and the reason is because we haven't had full officers and they don't predict to have them for another year. So we contract for 35, we budget for 38, and we have 28 or 29. And the sheriff office has said that hopefully by September, October of next year, we will be up to 35.
So then the next year, we might have to look at increasing that backup to what we could. The 26 tax revenue budget overview, continue on as how we did the total millage rates. Again, the millage rates decreased, the total. It went from 13.6271 to 13.4069. Let's see, the taxable value increased overall by 4.2%. There is a Renaissance zone, it's a tax exemption, that also was increased over last year by 4.2%. The calculation of the budget tax revenues, we take the 25 taxable value of the 1,906,224,887 minus a total of the 46,779,373. And what that includes, and I've got those written down for you, are the Renaissance zone, pilots, tax veterans exemptions, delinquent personal property tax, board review adjustments, local development finance authority taxable values. So there are some calculations that I've used in the budget, that we take the taxable value that's on our L4029 and we reduce all of these amounts and it gives us a 1,859,445,005. 14. At the bottom there. Is there any questions on that?
Property exemption. Sorry. Yeah, I'm, sorry, minimum supervisor.
Pan is, sorry, Dr. Row.
What is the, the line item says property exemption. Oh, is that like private?
Public properties? Yeah, yes.
Gotcha. Okay. It hit me as soon as I asked the question.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, the next page just shows what we've budgeted so far in the, for last year is the budget, the first column. The second column is the actual. As you can see, it is a shortage in my budget of 76,040,400. And that was just because of the veterans tax exempt. They can readjust those throughout the year, so that was just something that we didn't foresee. And so this year, I've actually put a little bit more in there so that we wouldn't have a reduced amount at the end of '26. The blue column, oops, sorry, I didn't go on yet. Sorry. So the last column over there is our budget and that's by each one of our funds. That's the dollar amount that we're budgeting that we will receive. And the calculations, how you get to those numbers, are based on what the taxable value is. Multiply that by the millage rate, and what I've shown you here is the millage rate of the whole total, and it gives you the 24,936,104. But if you were to do it by each one of the millages, that's the rate you would get. That's those dollar amounts that you see spread out. We do collect administrative tax of 1%. It cannot exceed what we have in expenditures for the treasurer and the assessing department. I put the amount that we totaled budget for the, those two departments at 1,175,822. And I've budgeted for 2026 total of administrative revenue fees coming in at 990,000. Then we get to tax revenue, which has been a hot topic lately. What I have budgeted is what I received off of the state site, the website. We pulled down numbers from the state website and you'll see the numbers up there, that 6,111,080 for the constitutional amount and a 771,708 for statutory amount. Of course, those amounts have all changed. So we did just, I did not have the numbers when I actually did this calculation, but I do have some numbers to share with you now. What we'll have to amend the budget by, you know, we are just a draft budget, so we are going to be changing these numbers. And what the state had passed, they are going to do a reduction of 6.3% of the constitutional amount. So that's going to go from the 6,111,080 to 5,725,499. So it's a reduction there. And also the statutory amount will decrease or stay pretty close to what 2025's was at So the total amount now that we will get instead of the 6,882,788, it's going to be reduced by 409,508 for a total of 6,473,728. So we do have a, a loss for 2026 that we have to adjust. So that will mean, as we have the budget now, if we don't find ways to make those savings, we will go into our fund balance for that amount. So we'll have to discuss those things.
And that's for operations?
Yes.
We will be going in because of this?
General operations, yes.
Because of this cut.
Is there any questions on that? I have, I have some information, you know, it is fairly new. Okay. We will go on. Oh, thank you. Yep, just dropped it. Thank you so much. Perfect. Okay, so the expenditure assumptions. So what we do is just the overall, we've got lots of funds that we go through, but there are some general expenditures that are assumed throughout all of the funds, you know, our fire fund, law enforcement fund, our, for ordinances, all of, all of our, that it touches wages, all of our funds that touch wages. We have personnel wages that we have budgeted for a 4% increase. Do you want to say that TP OAM contract is new this year and expires in 2029? The Teamsters will be switching, I believe, to a different union. They're in negotiations right now. And also the court is in negotiations, and those all expired in 2024. Non-union management increase, we budgeted, usually are determined by the Teamsters union increases, so we put a 4% increase in the budget. The fire union wages were budgeted at the 4% increase that was in their current contract, which expires in 2027. Elected official salaries are usually set by the board resolution every year, usually in November. As far as a personnel fringes, we had budgeted for 18% increase in healthcare. The amount actually came in at 15.67 increase. We've had very little increase over the last several years, which is very surprising, and we knew it was going to go up, but we're very pleased with just the increase of 15.67. Our vision, the dental, disability and life insurance, none of those actually increased at all for '26. The MERS pension, excuse me. Our annual required contribution did increase. It increased from 1,092,408 to 1,165,080. These, if you'll, if you look on the bottom of the spreadsheet, you'll see in my years 22, 23, and 24, the amount of the contributions are for the years of '24, '25, and '26. There's a two-year difference in those. That's because that's, is the last extra row report for '24 we received in June of '25. So it's always a two-year lag in the annual determined contribution. Okay, the OPEB, which is the other post-employment benefit, that one did decrease from a very slight amount, from 119,250 to 112,743. I am asking for a little bit more in the budget, not just the 112,743. I'm asking for 128,250. That will just help reduce the funded liability. That one is at 90%, 95% right now. That is a closed account for all of the employees that were hired before January 1 of 2012, of 14, sorry. For our employees that were hired after 12, 31 of 13, we offer the healthcare savings plan, and that is at, budgeted for 66 positions, a total of 171,600.
Another question.
Trustee Row.
Thank you. Under the township contributions for the 2026 general employees OPEB, you said there was a decrease, it says 27%, but that math doesn't work out unless something's wrong in my head. From 119 to 112, maybe it's supposed to be 2.7. What, the actual decrease?
What page are?
It's on the one that, with the township contributions, yes, 19, is that page 19?
Thank you.
Probably, I, you're probably.
It says a reduction of 27% from 119 to 112 there.
2.7.
That wouldn't be 27, yeah. Just a typo problem.
Okay, I'll make that correction, sir. Thank you. Fire pension, the pension, the annual determined contribution did increase from 1,176,795 to 1,420,011. And I've listed the bottom spreadsheet, what your fund balances, what the fund ratios are, what the unfunded liabilities are. That's all posted in there. The OPEB or the other pension employee benefit, we, that has been closed as of January 1 of 2014. That rate, and I did have a typo on that last one, it's 2026 contribution, the last column, so 2026. That did increase. Is there any questions on the OPEB? And then the next slide has the budgeted capital and transfers for 2025, just so that you could kind of see what was going on with all of the projects, where they stand, what our original budget for '25 was, what our amended budgets were, what we still have encumbered, and then what we expect to budget for 2026 and those projects, doing to carry forward on them. What I wanted to point out was the capital outlay, almost in the middle, that's number 901. We do not have any capital outlay budgeted for 2026. The big project that we have for the court safety grant, that is to be completed and it's on schedule and to be completed before the end of this year. Also our ARPA funds, all those projects, we did have to have those all contracted by '24. We have most of them being completed in '25. There are a couple of them that still need to be done. We have till '26, the end of '26 to get those completed. Those carryforwards are going to be for the hydro dam safety project and also for our roads. Transfers, the biggest transfer we have, the differences are being, thank you. The different transfers that we have are the general fund needed to give to the, the debt bond for our LDFA. These lowered from 155,825, and this year we only need 88,603, and that's because we put all these on there and so we had a little bit more income. Hopefully, next year we'll be able to put on culvers and we won't have to pull any from our general fund and we'll, that would be very nice. Also, the court, we did do, asked for a little bit more than what we had done the prior year, and also for the hydro station, this is just a, we had funds that the DTE is releasing and we get that annually and it goes into the general fund, we just are transferring it to the hydro fund. So those are those funds. Are there any questions on, as far as the capital budgets for next year? Now I just wanted to go over the budget amendments that we've had so far in 2025. So these are all the approved budget amendments that we've had. Our last page is our fund balance, how are we doing in the general fund? So the general fund ended with a positive fund balance in '24 of 7,165,294. In '25, we had revenues and expenditures that balanced to match each other to net to zero. We also needed to have 879,430, and we approved through the year 568,646, leaving with a projected budgeted balance of 5,717,218 for a ratio of 27%. What's projected for '26 going forward, we have our projects and we have the projected fund balance of the same amount because it, we're equaling, it would be 5,717,000 for a difference of fund balance to revenue ra- rate, revenue ratio of 43.5%. And that difference is because the revenue was so high on '25 because of all of our special projects and all the revenue that came in for the grants and those special projects. So that's kind of what that difference is. Any questions?
Trustee Row.
Thank you. I just had an overall question. I know that we do like a, or we used to, do a administrative, like, look at like overhead costs?
Yes.
That we could charge back to, because I thought because we weren't getting the general fund increases because of the rollbacks, is that, when's the last time that was updated or do they do that every year?
I do that every year.
Do you?
I do that every year, based on wages and the fringes of 40%, what the state tells us. So those are all calculated out, yeah.
And then I just wondered, I don't know what the police fund, is that healthy, the police fund?
Very healthy, yes.
Because I was just thinking about, can you charge any of the court stuff related to that, based on the millage language? I mean, have you thought about that or looked at it?
Security.
That's what I was thinking, maybe it's something worth.
Like the security there?
Yeah, because it's related to, I mean, looking at actual language and the courts and also because your prosecution's in there, I don't know. I know it's not something we've done in the past, but with our general fund dwindling, I just thought, might be worth taking a look at what in that court budget could be charged back to police services, especially since that's healthier. Just an idea. Yeah, we agree, and the actual formula, though, for the administrative cost was reduced.
It was reduced.
Yeah, because it carried.
Yeah, I was using, I was using a higher fringe rate than what the state required. I was using more than 40% of the fringe rate, so I had to reduce that, so it was.
Well, the state only allows a certain number or something?
It only allows up to 40%.
Is that because the grants or what is the law?
No, that's just, yeah.
It's a law that deals with administrative costs?
It's, it's any allocation. So when you do any allocations for grants, that's usually what you're doing allocations for. You can do it, wages for the hours you worked and then 40% of the fringes could be added onto that. So it did go down, just a, it did not go down very much. I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me. I think they went down not even less than 2%.
Thank you.
But those are in the budget.
Other questions or comments?
I have a question. I do apologize for my being late. I did have a chance to review this in my leisure and saw that, am I to assume that the difference between the '24 and '25 was the difference between 7.1 and 5.7 million?
Are we?
The fund balance.
The audited fund balance and you have projected fund balance. Was that what was, just from this page here?
Yes.
Is that what was used in the year 2025?
That is correct. It's a budget, so we have to use budget. That's not anything that's going to be actual. So we ended our year with that 7,165,294 is what, so we ended very healthy. It was, I was very surprised, very pleasantly surprised that it was as healthy as it was. And then we take what we have budgeted, we have budget revenue and budget expenditures at 21,000, or 21 million, sorry, 6,024.
Right.
Right, so that nets to zero, but within that amount, we had to draw from the general fund, prior year fund balance to make that balance of 8, 8.
79.
430, yes.
Okay.
But then throughout the year of '25, we budget, we've had to use the 568,646. We've had to use that. That was on the previous page of the budget amendments.
Okay, yes.
And so what are projected. That is correct. It's a budget. So we have to use budget. That's not anything that's going to be actual. So we ended our year with that 7,165,294 is what, so we ended very healthy. It was, I was very surprised, very pleasantly surprised that it was as healthy as it was. And then we take what we have budgeted. We have budget revenue and budget expenditures at 21,000, or 21 million, sorry, 6,024.
Projected out.
Right, so that nets to zero. But within that amount, we had to draw from the general fund, prior year fund balance, to make that balance of 8...
Seventy-nine.
Forty, 430, yes.
Okay.
But then throughout the year of '25, we budget, we've had to use the 568,646. We've had to use that. That was on the previous page of the budget amendments.
Yes.
And so what our projected fund balance is then, is you take the 7 million and subtract both the 879,430 and the 568,646, and that gives you the 5 million.
Okay, and then that's 27%. So it's still healthy.
It's still healthy, yes.
Yes. Almost, now, at what point would it be too healthy, I mean, to indicate that more money should be spent in other places?
Well, the auditor suggests for you to have at least about 20% of fund ratio, I mean, the fund balance to revenue ratio, that is not assigned.
Right.
So take, for instance, this amount that I projected down for '26 at the ending. I've got 43.5%. But when we look at that, what we could do is assign some of those funds to some other projects that are much needed.
Yes. Okay.
Trustee Newman, you also missed that they reduced state shared revenue by $409,000.
Okay.
So we were going into fund balance around, and we like whittled away at it, and we're going in at 70-some thousand, but now we have a reduction of 409,000. So that will come from fund balance, and the original legislation was for a 10% cut to communities and the county, but it ended up being 6-point-something percent. But still, for us, you know, that's a lot.
Okay.
And something we didn't anticipate, I mean, I'm no economist, but I definitely feel as if a recession is either here or close. People's personal budgets are very, very tight. The actuaries have us paying more based on investments, and I know that's every two years, so hopefully that'll be a better report, too. But I'm, I'm just really feeling similar to 2014, 13, 14.
Caution.
As far as the economy and what's happening with inflation and cost of things, it's, it's not good. There's lots of cuts at the federal level, so anyone who works in our, you know, community or our counties being affected by it. They're laying off everywhere. I'm just, you know, a little concerned for the, hopefully everything works out. Took us 13 year, or more than that, 10 years, 11 years to get almost to what we lost in taxable value. And we're the closest this year than we've been, so we can't afford to go back anymore.
So it's important to have a...
Have a fund balance.
Balance, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, that sustained, having a healthy fund balance back in 2008, that's what sustained the township through all those lean years, is you kind of tighten your belt a little bit, make sure your fund balance is healthy to get you through those hard times. Yes, definitely.
Yeah, we had to reduce two positions and went to a 32-hour work week. There was a lot, a lot of things going on that occurred. So we don't want that to ever happen again, so we're trying to budget very conservatively, which I think that we've always tried to do, but we did not anticipate that loss of over 400,000 in state shared revenue. We're also at full staff, so that's going to, of course, affect your operations. So I'm glad we've restored all the positions. The fire department's at full staff. The township employees are at full staff. So, I mean, that's the good news that we're finally back to full staff, so.
Okay. Any more questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Giovanna. So just moving forward, you know, it's a line item budget for people in the audience, and it pretty much explains every single line item that we have, and no other community does it. I don't like the way, the word transparent, because it's thrown around very loosely, but I do think it's very clear, the revenue and the expenditures for people to see online and available at the clerk's office. So we'll set a public hearing, board members, for the budget. Is that a, just proceeding like we did last year? If there's any question, you know, board members can also sit down and meet with us or meet with me, and Giovanna will go over anything. But it's pretty consistent from last time, other than all the ARPA projects, that revenue and expenditures is no longer in the budget, except for the roads and stormwater and the hydro dam, because those haven't been completed yet. So we will re-budget for those.
I did, I did want to add one more thing that I think I skipped over for our residents and our audience here, is that we put the full draft on our website.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it is on our IPSY Township website. You can pull, you can pull the whole, the whole budget down. Thank you.
Thank you, Giovanna. The next item on our agenda is a consent agenda, which is for the minutes of September 16th, 2025, and statements and checks.
So Mo Peterson.
Motion Peterson. Support Aldridge. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Attorney, legal update, Mr. Winters?
I'm the chairman, township board members. Our last meeting was held on Tuesday, September 16th, where I gave a very detailed update in regards to the status of our efforts to convince UFM to abandon their plans to build a computational center in conjunction with Los Alamos at the Bridge Road textile road properties, and instead to focus, refocus their efforts on the ACM property, given that unbeknownst to us, they had negotiated, quote unquote, for 18 months with ACM prior to reaching, I guess they did, an, after which in July, we asked them to go back to the table, but this time to allow us to have a seat at the table, which both ACM and UFM have continued to refuse or do not to do, to deny. So subsequent to September 16th, what has actually happened? On September 19th, we did meet here at the Township Civic Center with representatives of the MEDC, that's the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. They were the arm, they are the arm of the Michigan Strategic Fund. They had awarded UFM $100 million to develop the computational centers at the Bridge Road property back when it was 20 acres. During our meeting, there was also attended by the township's full-time officials, environmental consultant Grant Trigger, as well as State Representative Jimmy Wilson, who had facilitated the meeting being arranged. My impression, I'll speak for myself, was that the MEDC representatives seemed to be in agreement with the township's position that it only made sense for these computational AI centers to be located on the ACM property. They were going to go back to Lansing, and they were going to have internal meetings and also have this follow-up discussions with the governor's office, and so we were going to wait to hear from them once they've had a chance to reconvene and reassess. During that time period, as you know, the state of Michigan seemed to be centered around reaching their own budget and averting their own shutdown, which they were successful in doing. During that time period, I continued to stay in touch with State Representative Wilson in regards to making sure this kept, that this issue became, you know, front and center from our standpoint. And we also met on September 23rd, I say we, Supervisor Stumbo, myself and Grant Trigger, met with Yucca representatives who had, who were hosting a meeting involving UFM and their engineer, asking a number of questions about the textile roadside versus the ACM site. I believe it was clear, again, from my standpoint right now, that the better option would be the ACM property. But since there was no site plan that has ever been submitted, it's very difficult, if not impossible, to speculate as to what any review would look like, other than the township continuing to point out that the Willer Run pump station contains five pumps, of which only one is being utilized because of the GM Hydromatic plant closure. Back when that plant was there, all those pumps were in operation. Four of the five are idle. That's in stark contrast to what is occurring at the March Road pump station, where those pumps are actually under somewhat of a stressor at the moment, especially if the computational identity center from Augusta Township actually becomes a reality. So, again, for a lot of obvious reasons, it's my impression that the sensible location would be the ACM property. Then I've also provided the township board with an update showing that of the original 307 acres that comprised the ACM property, that was a former footprint of the General Motors property, of that 307, over almost 50% remains vacant. In other words, there's plenty of property available on the ACM property to host the computational and AI centers. So again, we have continued to struggle with trying to get our foot in the door, much less a seat at the table, when logic and common sense continues to indicate, at least to us, that the place for the computational and AI centers to be located is ACM. In the previous letters I sent to MEDC, I also pointed out that, you know, the 2015 Comprehensive Development Agreement might need, might need to be revisited, because it's not, it's not just about autonomous vehicles anymore. The technology that has changed during the last 10 years has truly been staggering, and we would be somewhat misguided to believe that that technology today is not going to continue to evolve during the next 10 years. So it only makes sense right now, though, given the ability for Yucca to service all the needs. We also point, Yucca also pointed out during that meeting with UFM, that if they were really truly committed to the environment, that Yucca could actually provide them with the affluent, which is the treated wastewater, and that would actually could be used to cool down their computers, which if they did that, would be a tremendous cost savings. It'd be a tremendous positive for the environment, and would also, we believe, be the first one in the country that's actually using affluent for that purpose. So, at this point in time, it's our position, the MEDC has 100 million reasons as to why they should convince UFM to relocate to ACM. They have not executed any grant documents awarding that grant to UFM as of this date. I verified that before the meeting with State Rep. Wilson. And at the same time, there's also a debt owed by ACM in the amount of $35 million to the MEDC. So common sense, again, only makes the right decision, is to go forward with that property. The other issue I wanted to at least, I can't address here. And it's, it's kind of difficult sometimes to find the right words to give a board update, given the amount of letters that I have written on this issue. But I'm extremely bothered, and I think the township board should be also concerned and bothered, as to what occurred at 2490 East Michigan Avenue back on May 2nd of this year. On that date, our fire department responded to a significant fire that occurred at that property on that date. During the course of fighting that fire, mutual aid was activated, and during that fire, there was a discovery made by the fire marshal, and later on, the police officers, lawnet, a number of other individuals, that inside one of the trailers that was on fire was anywhere between 600 and 700 pounds of processed marijuana. Again, I'm not just saying a small amount, 600 to 700 pounds of marijuana. Some of the street value wholesale has pegged that amount at being 1.2 to 1.4 million. I don't really know. It's a significant amount. In addition, the other trailer involved had dozens of marijuana plants that had not yet mature to where they could be processed, cultivated, et cetera. So why does this concern me? Well, you've also seen the newspaper articles that have come out this past week, that in the course of balancing the state's budget, they increased the marijuana tax by 24% over what it currently is, bringing it to the second highest tax on legalized marijuana that's sold through licensed dispensaries in the nation. Now, none of us, it's not my point to advocate one way or the other about the marijuana legalization that was approved by the state voters. However, what has been increasingly pointed out by everyone who's followed this topic is that what's going to happen, and what has been happening, is the increase in the number of illegal grow ops in the state of Michigan, particularly in Washtenaw County, in which the marijuana can then be sold, quote unquote, on the black market. And so we're seeing this right now play out. There's no question that the marijuana that was seized from that fire on May 2nd was not processed by a legal, legal grow op. There was no testing of the marijuana for harmful fungus, any type of fentanyl. Nothing was done to protect the health and safety of the consumer, had that marijuana entered into the underground economy or the black market. At the same time, obviously there'd be, there would be no tax revenue, but also, more importantly, there was a discovery inside that trailer of what they referred to as a BHO lab, which is like a butane honey oil, which is, uses some type of an extract from chemicals to enhance the potency of the marijuana. It's very flammable, very dangerous. In fact, many of you may recall, a few years ago, we had a house blow up over here. It was, I'm not sure if it was Sugarbrook or where it was, because of the, having an illegal lab. So you have a BHO lab, they had 200 pounds of propane, ethanol. You had firefighters responding to that scene. You had other first responders responding to their, that scene. And you have this almost unbelievable quantity of marijuana right here, with the question being, okay, what should we do with it? What do you do now? Okay? So common sense would tell you, obviously, you would investigate, find, and they discovered the name of the person that had leased these buildings. You would launch an investigation, and you would follow the evidence to where it may or may not lead to a criminal indictment. That never happened. It never happened. It never happened because during the course of the on-scene investigation that was being carried out by deputies, and I've seen the body cams, and I've seen the number of deputies that were walking around, looking at everything, uh, they were also on the phone with the Washtenaw County Prosecuting Attorney's Office, and were advised by them that, quote, "They were not going to prosecute anything related to weed, related to marijuana." So, in other words, it doesn't make any difference if this is a violation of the Michigan Regulation and Taxation Marijuana Act, it doesn't make any difference that it has a BHO lab that's a danger to first responders, it doesn't make any difference that it's going to go into the black market. We're not going to do anything because, quote unquote, "it's marijuana." Now, I've written letters to the prosecuting attorney, and to the sheriff, and we have requested that we have a meeting, so that we can obtain further information, clarification, et cetera. This was all going on before we saw the explosion of articles about what the state of Michigan was planning on doing. Unbeknownst to what I was, when I was writing letters, asking for clarification, I had no idea that at some point in time, they were going to pass this increase in the marijuana tax that has now brought this issue, even according to State Senator Jeff Irwin. He says the passage of this is going to open the floodgates to the black market, it's going to also bring a certain level of crime and blight to communities, and it's going to have a very, very devastating impact upon the legal industry of those that have followed the rules and received their license through the state of Michigan. My issue right now is this, or our board's issue should be this. After the police officers on scene were told that there would be no criminal prosecution because it involved marijuana, their marijuana was then taken back or transported back to the sheriff's department, and there it stayed until a few weeks later, it was taken to a burn field where it was destroyed. So, all the evidence has been destroyed by fire. Uh, I don't have any, we have the date as to when it happened, we know where it occurred at, we have no court order, we have no testing that was done. And I don't, I think this sends the wrong message to people who are following the process that are going to go into the marijuana business legally, that they can be undermined by having operations of this nature, uh, set up. And in fact, right now, the one article I shared with the board had to do with the, uh, government of China is now heavily involved in the black market, uh, production of marijuana, especially in states of Oklahoma and Michigan, where the laws could be somewhat, prosecution could be somewhat confusing. Here in Washtenaw County, we have read the policy of the prosecuting attorney when it comes to marijuana, and even under his, his policy, which is extremely, extremely very lenient, where he will not prosecute marijuana in many cases, under his own policy, the case I just described to you checks all the boxes off on the, on, as an example, as a type of case, that under his own policy should have been prosecuted. So, at this point in time, uh, we had a meeting we thought scheduled for Friday, uh, that was canceled. Uh, maybe they'll, maybe they will reschedule it, or maybe they will not. But at some point in time, I think the board has to have a serious discussion as, as a board, what do you do? Because, again, uh, this puts our first responders, in my opinion, in harm's way. They should have been wearing respirators. I have no idea what type of chemicals were utilized to process that marijuana, the fact that it was in a closed-end trailer. The only good thing that came out of this, according to Fire Marshal Walgren, is that, and the chief, was that the fire actually occurred during the daytime. Uh, and I say that because there were a number of parked cars around the facilities where the fire occurred. Had that fire occurred in the evening, it'd been very difficult to have even seen where to move those cars to in order to get to the trailers where the fire was occurring, and it could have been much more of a devastating fire, could have been an explosion with those ethanol and propane tanks, and the whole thing could have been a very, very dangerous outcome for those who walk in. Furthermore, it's not uncommon for these type of operations that are operating illegally to have actually booby-trapped these places, because if they fear that somebody may break in and steal their product, it's not uncommon in many places for it to be rigged in a way that could cause a great deal of harm to those who might otherwise venture into that trailer. So, I'll stop with that right now, beyond just saying that, uh, we have spent a lot of time, and we, I think we as a township, and the largest, uh, and we see a lot of illegal activities and grow operations, that we stand tall there right now, and try to make sure we get the answers as to why this was allowed to happen the way that deputies did their job, they responded, they could, they, uh, I believe they secured the scene at that point. I think they were taken aback, uh, and surprised to find out that they were being told that basically no prosecution would be forthcoming. So, I wanted to take a moment, I would not have gone into all that detail tonight, but since we were planning, planning on having a meeting this Friday that was canceled, then I think the board, it's only right for the board to be aware of everything that we're aware of when it comes to what happened at this location.
Questions are coming. I do want to say that how this amount of illegal drug, because it wasn't processed properly, and we have no idea because they didn't test it, but 700 pounds of marijuana is okay. Processing the butane honey oil that would explode, it will explode, it was on fire, they, thank God, got to it before it did, it would have exploded. It was surrounded in a salvage yard with vehicles, old vehicles all around it. It was, and I'm just shocked, I think if it was any, any one of us, it'd been a perp walk down the, um, you know, the hallways, and to not hold someone accountable for this, and it can be, it is dangerous. If you don't know the level of the THC, it's very dangerous. It can mix, and they do mix fentanyl with it. To not test it, to not investigate or verify the person who was growing it actually had a patient license, I mean, nothing was, it was just, no, the prosecutor said no, and I understand the sheriff's office perspective, kind of. I hope it changes, I think we should submit, this is not a minor grow operation, it's 700 pounds of processed marijuana with the butane honey and oil, and I'm not sure if that was part of the 700 pounds estimate. But I think when you have a policy in a county that says it's okay to do this, there will be more people doing it. And it's not legal. It's not legal to do it, and the law needs to be enforced, and I hope, what I was hoping by Friday is to just talk to them in person and ask them, or let them know, Ypsilanti Township cares about these illegal operations. We know houses can blow. It happened here. Thank God, no one was hurt. And for us to not even be able to have a say in that, and the policy that Mr. Winters shared with the board said that small operations, well, I don't know what small means if 700 pounds is not small. That is, and who was it going to? Where was it going? And we have no, there's no investigation, I, I just, I don't want to be part of sweeping it under the rug, because now that we know about it, I'm not sure what we can do about it, but I think we should look at seeing what we can do about it, just so that the law in every county is enforced. This, this was very troubling and very dangerous to allow to happen in our community. So, hopefully, if we have a meeting, I thought for sure, we scheduled it so quickly, it was awesome, and then all of a sudden, it's going to be rescheduled. I don't know when, and when it does, we'll, we will let the board know. We are gravely concerned about this in our community. So, thank you, Mr. Winters, for all your follow-up, and I don't, if we can do something, I think we should, but I'm not sure what we can do. Maybe for future, we can, but I don't know what we can do on this one, and I don't know, but it shouldn't be taken lightly. Yes, trustee.
Did we, did we find out who was doing it or not? We do know who.
They had, there's a name, but they didn't. And I understand, um, from the sheriff, and the deputies wanted to, they're all like scratching their heads, and they're like, really? We're not going to do anything about this? And the fire department, I mean, everyone was kind of shocked.
And they sent a report, or they didn't send a report?
They did not send.
Prosecution.
They called the prosecutor's office and spoke with.
They spoke to, and under the, under the prosecutor's policy, only he, Prosecutor Sevitt, or his chief assistant, Victoria Burden, I think it's Harris, only those two can authorize these type of cases. So, there was an assistant prosecuting attorney that was on the phone with the law net and sheriff's deputies advising them that prosecutor's office was not going to prosecute anything related to marijuana. What we don't know is that, that, that assistant, had to check in with the prosecutor and assistant, because under that policy they have, only they, those two, can authorize that. So, either they, the answer is very obvious, either he didn't check with them and just made his own interpretation and said no, or he checked with them and they said no. But that was what the meeting in part was to try and determine, because.
So, now they don't like send a police report? Even, they like, oh, can I file a complaint on this? It makes no sense to me.
It doesn't.
At least it's in writing and it doesn't fall, because now it's on the sheriff's department too, you know? Like, I mean, so, did they just blow it off themselves? I mean, we don't really know. I mean.
They actually prepared a report, and they confirmed what I just said in their police report.
So, have we seen that police report?
Yeah, you have a copy.
Oh, okay. So, they did send a report?
No.
They prepared a report after the incident, in which they recited what I just said.
All right.
Also, in the report stated that they did not submit it to the prosecuting attorney's office, because they were advised by their office that no prosecution was going to be, you know, forthcoming, or be initiated. So, that's in their report, and they did a supplemental report, and they actually destroyed it three weeks later. So, that's documented. But the position, I believe, is that there wasn't any point for them to do anything further, them being the county, law net, anybody else, after being told by the prosecutor, chief prosecuting attorney's office, that they were not going to prosecute it. So, their, their only option in their minds was to store it until they could safely destroy the marijuana.
I just think it's so unfair, it's not, I mean, the safety and stuff, but also, for those who are doing legitimate businesses, it's so, it's a smack to them, like, okay, let's run a, you know, let's run a brewery out here, or let's make alcohol, it's just like, yeah, that makes no sense.
It really.
Well, and I just want to mention that, as Attorney Winters said, there was an article in, sorry, there was an article about cannabis, China's black market marijuana tentacles have reached Michigan, that was in, I'm live on October 5th. The discrepancy between the way this was handled and the way that article shows something being handled in another township is, it's so disturbing, even on the safety, the idea that, um, we weren't unprepared for this, even for the protection of the people who responded. So, in the picture, it shows like a hazmat suit, it shows gloves, it shows that when they're going there to take care of it and investigate it, that they're protected. Like, we had the fire chief, we had the fire marshal, we had several deputies show up, and there was no action on to secure the scene, to make sure the people who were supposed to do an investigation were safe, like, it's just, we're all Michigan, it's another township, but it shouldn't be treated this way. And then it describes, like, kilos, like 45 kilos, which equals about 100 pounds, so we have more, well more than 100 pounds here, and what the laws are for that. So, again, it just is very disturbing to, there, there's multiple situations that keep happening where the people who are supposed to help us don't help us. So, whether it's a pile of coal ash that shows up, and the people who are supposed to help us and check and see what's in that pile, so that we could at least know, stuff just disappears, nobody feels like testing stuff, and it's just disturbing. So, you got to look at things before you can really make a decision. Like, how can you make an educated decision if you don't even look and process what's there to make a decision? We do have different viewpoints about how things should be handled, um, but you can't make a real decision when you're trying to take care of people if you don't do a proper investigation. People are counting on people to do that, and in this case, we were failed miserably.
That's one postscript I could, please, to what trustee, I mean, what Clerk Swenson indicated. In the case she's referring to, the 45 kilograms, which is approximately 100 pounds, those individuals are expected to plead guilty to felonies that carries with it a 15-year prison sentence. And here you have a situation where you have seven times that quantity, and you're just being told basically to go ahead and just burn it and destroy it. And I think it's important that, as trustee Rowe pointed out, which was trying to indicate at the very beginning, when you have this incident happen against the backdrop of having the second highest tax now in the country on those who are trying to follow the rules and play by the, you know, the proper taxation, puts them at a very, very disadvantage. But more importantly, from where I'm sitting, it's the health and safety aspect here, because we have no clue. We've seen too many examples where a small amount of fentanyl is absolutely lethal, no question about it. And to have a situation where you have a BHO lab, we have no idea what was, was being utilized to process that marijuana. And if the Chinese government, as alleged in this article, is now having its tentacles in the state of Michigan and other states in this country, uh, we know pretty much for certainty that China has also been the main exporter of fentanyl, and they, they find it in everything coming, coming into the United States. So, I, I, I don't think any of us are being overreactive, being histrionic, we understand what the legalities are, but we'll never understand when you have, if you can see the faces of, I believe, the men that are first responders, seeing them look, look down, it's almost like in a way, they just, this is a new day here in Washtenaw County, where I can discover a lab of this magnitude, and I'm being told within hours of responding here, the thank you but no thanks, there'll be no prosecution, so therefore, do whatever you have to do, but don't basically bring it to us. Now, that's the, that's my interpretation of that report, when someone says there'll not be any prosecution for marijuana, it's basically, this is not your problem, you figure it out, because we're not going to do anything with it.
All right. So, stay tuned, and when we have the meeting, we'll let you know, and we'll keep looking for other ways to address this. Under new business, we have the approval of the memorandum of understanding with gov deals to host township excess items auction.
So, is he coming up?
Thank you, support, oh, thank you. Discussion. Mr. Hines?
Good evening, John Hines, Municipal Service Director. The Residential Services Department is requesting for gov deals be approved to host the auction for excess township items. At the August 19th meeting, the board approved the selling off of excess items from the township from varying departments. After that approval- After that approval, we went to post the items on bid net, which is where we've done it historically. And in the time since our last auction, bid net does actually not offer an auction service anymore, strictly posting of RFPs. So with that, we were given a list of names from the purchasing clerk for a few different sites to research, and that was gov deals, municipal bid, and public surplus. Our department, especially our residential services clerk, Roan, did a lot of research. We did a few teams meetings with each of these three organizations. And we're requesting gov deals, because although they offer the same 12.5% purchase charge to the buyer as public surplus, or excuse me, municipal bid, their interface of their site, their ease of usability for our staff to post the items, and their user base of buyers stood them above the rest as kind of our recommended client. So if this were approved, we would take the photos that we brought to the board on August 19th, post these items on their site, much in the same way eBay works, and then their base of users would bid on them during that open window. And there would be no charge of the township to utilize this service. That 12.5% buyer's premium that I mentioned is what would get taken off of the purchase price that the buyer pays as the gov deal's price to use.
Questions or comments?
I do, Madam Chair. So, John, this gov deal, if we approve this, when will they start the process of putting it on their site, so people can bid on the items?
We would start tomorrow. So how that process-
Immediately.
Yeah, so how the process would start is, of course, right now, we don't have an account with gov deals. So our office, Roan, would lead that effort, would set up our account, which that would take a few days' worth of process. Then they would actually assign a representative to work with her directly and walk us through the posting, since we're brand-new at it. So then we would go and list all the items, again, much like eBay, with a seven- or 10-day or 14-day bidding window, depending on their recommendation, and then leave it on there and wait to see kind of what happens during that 14 days. If some items don't sell, we can elect to extend it, or, you know, or dispose of it, depending on what the items are.
Great, thank you.
And just the timeframe for, you know, if someone, the winning bidder, they have five days to contact the township and communicate a pickup as their window, I'd say, of purchase. And then after that five days, once that is figured out, work with gov deals to make that connection of sale, and then they'll get charged, and then we'll get paid after that fact.
Other questions are coming?
So it's contingent on attorney review of the memorandum?
Correct.
Yep, Attorney Winters has the MOE.
I can still write tomorrow.
Yes.
The account check.
Yes, thank you for that clarification.
So does this eliminate the sales that we used to have here, for like cars and trucks, or old trucks and stuff? Or does, will that go on this online deal?
Correct. So that's, this is what we'll use instead. So we will still plan to have excess equipment auction every year or bi-yearly, depending on what we have available to sale. But since Mitten won't do it, gov deals will be our preferred vendor going forward for that.
Because we used to actually have an auction day here, and people would come and offer.
That's something we could explore. I just know in our past few auctions, we only did online.
Okay, okay. All right. And this is contingent upon attorney's review, is that correct? So we have a motion by Peterson, support by Ro, to approve the memorandum of understanding with gov deals to host township excess items auction, contingent upon attorney's approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Number two is to waive the financial policy requiring posting to Mitten and approve the purchase of four new step cross-trainer machines in the amount of $26,178. This is for the senior recreation center, and it is budgeted. Motion Ro, support Eldridge. I know our senior coordinator is here. Does anyone have any questions on the purchase? I know there's been meetings with the senior citizens, and this is from, there was a millage approved for seniors, and $200,000 was given to communities that had their own senior centers for operations, as well as purchasing of capital. And this was one of the things that the seniors identified to have replaced. So we have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is to approve litigation to bait a public nuisance violation at 560 and 565 Elder, which is budgeted. Motion Ro.
Support.
Support. John Newman? Newman? Mr. Winters? Oh, I'm sorry, Belinda, I didn't see you up here. My apologies. Any questions?
Good evening, Board. Belinda Kingsley, Community Compliance Director. This is a case that is, a mobile home has been delivered to two parcels in the township without receiving planning, zoning, or building department approval. And this was approximately a year ago that it happened. And in that time, the township's given the property owner the opportunity to demonstrate that he could make it, make it right with the building code and the zoning ordinance, was issued a permit with stipulations, and essentially, nothing happened. It remains exactly the same as it was when it was delivered almost a year ago. And we've also had quite a few complaints from the neighbors to have it removed, because it doesn't look right, sitting there, not on a foundation or anything. And the owner is not responsive to us to do anything with it. So at this point, we need to initiate litigation and have it removed.
Questions or comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number four is approve resolution 2025-28, payment and use of surplus drain funds in the amount of $30,000 to match a green stormwater infrastructure grant. Clerk Swanson?
Resolution, our Charter Township of Ypsilanti, resolution number 2025-28, resolution for payment and use of surplus drain funds, whereas section 283 of the Drain Code provides that the Water Resources Commissioner may enter into an agreement with a municipality for the maintenance and use of surplus construction funds, if the municipality has been assessed for all or part of the cost of the drain project. And whereas use of surplus construction funds held in an account by agreement may be used to pay of drain assessments to the township, or such surplus funds may be utilized to address drainage in the township by resolution from the township. And whereas the municipality of Ypsilanti Charter Township is requesting that Washtenaw County Water Resources Commissioner use a portion of their surplus construction funds held in fund number 8863 for the purpose of building green stormwater infrastructure at Clubview Park, Fairway Hills Park, and Rosedale Right-Away, YTD number 12, as part of a National Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant. Now therefore be it resolved that the township requests and authorizes the Water Resources Commissioner apply $30,000 from fund number 8853, Ypsilanti Township Special Maintenance Fund, toward the, toward the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation Grant Project. Be it further resolved that the clerk shall forward the Water Resources Commissioner a copy of this resolution. So moved?
Motion Swanson? Support Ro. Any questions are coming? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Much thanks to the Drain Commissioner, or Water Resource Commission, for continuing to bring this forward. Number five is budget amendment number 11, clerk Swanson?
Motion to amend the 2025 budget, number 11. Move to increase the general fund budget by $15,000 to $21,21,024, and approve the department line item changes as outlined. Move to increase the bike, sidewalk, rack, roads, general BSR2 fund budget by $110,000 to $2,477,490, and approve the department line item changes as outlined. Move to increase the recreation fund by $203,395 to $1,226,132, and approve the department line item changes as outlined. Move to increase the 14B District Court Fund budget by $15,000 to $1,884,633, $633, and approve the department line item changes as outlined. So moved?
Motion Swanson? Support Newman or Ro?
That was Ro.
I'm sorry, support Ro. Questions or comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Authorization and bids, we have to accept the bid from Abbey Door for the replacement of the bay doors at the fire department headquarters in the amount of $74,000, which is budgeted. Motion Ro?
Support Peterson.
Support Peterson. Discussion? Chief?
Good evening. Looking to go with Abbey Door. They are a vendor of the township, we've had for many years. A couple of things to make note of the company there is, anytime we've had any type of door breakage currently at the fire station, the doors are, the original doors that were put in the fire station in 1991 or 92, when they were first installed. And we've replaced many panels and many glasses that have been broke over the years, and it's just time to have them replaced. So going through the three-bid process with Mitten at the time, they did come back a little bit more expensive. But what they stand for in their quality of work, they're on call 24 hours, 7 days a week for us. We call if it's Christmas Eve, they come out immediately and get the door fixed until either get it open for us or get it shut, because we know we have to secure the fire station when we leave. They've, like I said, they come in with 24 hours. I've called them at 3:00 in the morning, and they've answered right on the first ring, and they certainly come out, take care of business for the township. So I would like to see them receive the bid for the eight doors of the fire station headquarters on Ford Boulevard.
Questions or comments?
Question from Peterson.
Trustee Peterson?
You said eight doors?
Yes, ma'am.
So they're going to do the complete doors. Have you ever had to fix the rollers so that they wouldn't retract and all that stuff, you know? You're in a fire department, you've got to have your doors worked.
Yes.
So have, have you ever had to fix those rollers on the doors, however they open up?
Yes, ma'am.
Has that given you problems after problem? I heard you talk about the windows and other points, but I'm talking about retraction of them doors opening up.
Yes. So I have, I kind of blumped it all together. So with the doors themselves, but yeah, you have the rollers that go up and down, just much like you have at your home. The motors themselves, they burn out after a while. But certainly, yes, those have been replaced. And a lot of the times, what he has done for us, he'll order like five or six of them, and just keep them on stock, put them on the shelf for us. So we're not incurring any type of additional charge for shipping and handling. He has them on the spot. We pretty much try and tell him what's going on with the door, but he always has to come out, or his staff comes out, puts their eye on it, and has the service stuff on their truck for us right away.
And what is the guarantee with the new doors? I just mentioned that, because you talked about the glass, but you never talked about the rollers. I'm pretty sure you had problems with rollers.
Yeah. Absolutely. The tracks will go up to get bent, for sure.
Which is so important.
Yes.
You do something about it immediately. But my question is also, so you said eight doors, is there, do you have a warranty for a couple of years or not?
I'm sure we do. I would have to look back, to get to the answer for you in just a few seconds. I can go back up and take a look.
As long as you're sure, it should be a warranty.
Yes.
If we replace all the doors and you spend that kind of money, this should be a type of warranty.
Yep. And there's no charge to take away the old ones. He's waiving that for us, or that might be part of his process. I think we're trying to bring it up now, but I don't, oh.
Whether it be a year or two years or whatever.
Well, there would have to be some sort of contract.
I know that'd be something in there.
Thank you.
But I trust you on it.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, well, we would definitely make sure that-
Just make sure it's in there.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. That's then my question. Thank you.
Any other questions are coming? I just have a couple. Of course, I trust you too, but we do trust, but verify, and to make sure that there's a contract for this, or-
Yes.
Not just the bid proposal. You would actually-
Go to-
Yeah, you would through the attorney's office normally, correct?
Yeah, what I would probably need is the actual specifications that would show that what they bid on. I have the quote here, obviously. We would normally prepare a contract. Given the amount of money involved, there are certain, usually bonds that might have to also go along with the performance bond, as well as the labor material bond. Obviously, the warranty that's mentioned would be an important component of that as well. We also have the prevailing wage ordinance for any work done on township buildings that would also be included in the contract. It's not complicated, I just need more of these specifications. I need a certificate of insurance that would name the township and officials as being additionally insured. Just the typical requirements of most of these contracts. It is $74,000, so it definitely passes the threshold under our financial policy to have a contract.
Sure, absolutely. I will certainly get that.
The other, are you, the one bid that was for 47, West Metro Door?
Yes, never heard of them before. I think they may be out of metro Detroit area, not 100% on that.
Says, yeah, Northline Taylor.
Okay.
But I didn't, I'm not familiar with them either. I know Abbey Door, because that is who we've always-
Right. And I think there were some other people that were able to bid on it. But I was looking, and we, we had spoke quite a bit with them on the phone, the different people that had sent this stuff in to us, and they don't do 24-hour service. And I ask, well, what happens in the middle of the night? And they will, we'll just see in the morning type deal. And I can't, can't run a fire station like that without the security of the door, so.
And plus, they're out county, so they're in our financial policy.
Right.
Is Sumter, that's not in our county either?
No, that'd be, that'd be Wayne County. I think they might be on the border there. So.
So this is also contingent upon an attorney's approval, correct?
Yes.
Can I add that to the motion?
And then in the meantime-
Trustee Ro and Peterson?
Yes, Madam Chair, for me.
Well? That's all right.
And I will get the information requested as far as the warranty and stuff. I'll call him tomorrow and explain to him that, and we'll get it over to Mr. Winters for his review.
You can manually open it, can't you, if it doesn't work one day?
There is a chain on the side that you can manually put it up.
Thank you. I'm just glad to hear.
It's, it would take probably two or three people to do it.
To do that, probably.
Because we have heavy doors. I would just do it for safety reasons, but yeah, absolutely.
Okay. We have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
And thank you. Just one comment I have about the whole marijuana thing. Thank you for having our backs out there as well. It was very disturbing to find out from day one until we were at, well, presently today, what's going on. But thank you to the chief, thank you to the firefighters for standing with us and making our job still a little bit safer. Thank you.
There's no other business? Is there public comments? Does anyone have public comments? If you go to the microphone and just give your name, and if you're from the township, then three minutes.
My name is Chris Tevens. I'm a resident down Green Farm Drive, and I'm here representing the Ypsilanti District Library Board of Justices. Last, in September 24th, we had a meeting, an emergency meeting, to review and support a resolution supporting a homeless shelter being placed inside of the city limits of Ypsilanti. I'm here speaking with you all, because we're all one connected community. This problem is, really involves everyone around here. So I just want to just highlight a couple of quick things that we had on our resolution. Whereas Ypsilanti District Library staff has seen a significant uptick in patrons experiencing homelessness, and although our library can provide support resources for those patrons through our social worker on staff, they still have nowhere to go after the library closes. Whereas local hospitality houses, churches, and service organizations are vital in addressing immediate shelter needs, but a permanent shelter is necessary to provide long-term solutions for individuals experiencing homelessness, focusing on both emergency housing and pathways of permanent housing. of permanent housing. And whereas the Ypsilanti District Library Board of Trustees recognizes the importance of a permanent shelter in supporting patrons who are homeless, providing not only a safe place to stay, but also essential services to support their transition to stable and permanent housing. The Ypsilanti District Board of Trustees supports and further endorses the City of Ypsilanti's resolution 2025-007, which requests the Washtenaw Board of Commissioners allocate funding for the establishment and operation of a permanent shelter in the City of Ypsilanti for individuals experiencing homelessness in Ypsilanti and across the county. So again, we're not asking for any financial support from the, from the township, we're looking at really trying to advocate for the county board commissioners to really put in a, utilize our community mental health millage to put in a permanent shelter inside the city limits of Ypsilanti. So, you know, we hope that the Ypsilanti Township would join us in supporting our fellow city over here in their resolution, and, you know, we're, we're open to any questions or anything that we have for you guys.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Brenda Stombach, I understand it's your birthday today, happy birthday. My name is Leonard Langford, I've been living in the community for 25 years now. Green Farms, I moved there first, there were only like four or five homes there, lived there for two years, and I've been living in the Preserve for the last 23 years, great community. Ypsilanti Township, I can't tell people enough about it as far as the aesthetics, the safety, and how you, Brenda, and the trustees, and all this connected with this community as far as public servants, really take care of us. My concern this evening, and I have to leave it to three minutes, so I'm going to try to make this concise, is that we have a problem in our community, and I want to say our community, not just in the Preserve, but in Ypsilanti Township, with vehicles that do not have a tag at all, expired tags, tags are inoperable, flat tires, et cetera. That's something that is a deterrent for anyone that wants to move here, it's a safety concern for all of us that live in the community, especially when you hear on TV, and you see on TV where they're finding dead bodies in cars, you're seeing cars that are on fire and different things, and including human remains in it. Not only that, from a appeal, nobody wants to go to a strip mall, or should I say, a, like over, there is a strip mall that has a van parked there, a commercial van, has two flats, it's been there for a long time, is where Powerhouse Gym is. Things like that will not attract it, will detract. But the main thing is that, like I said, we have a beautiful community, and we need action on this as soon as possible, not down the road. I've heard within these walls from different departments, oh, it's government, it's going to take a minute. I am asking that we put this on the front burner, that we take care of this as soon as possible. We want to keep our community the way it is, and if not the way it is, we want to make it better. And I was the president of our homeowners association, and people will come to me, because they, they don't know who the president is, they'll say, Leonard, what do you think about this? Can they do this? And my answers have been what I've been told, and I don't have time to share that, but I understand that it comes back to the township to take care of this problem, it's not a Washtenaw County Sheriff thing, because it is in our community, and some communities, it's Washtenaw County roads and not private roads. So if you can, if you all can come up with some ordinance, a policy, I don't know what the government lingo is, to take care of that, your residents would be very proud and appreciative.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment?
Chairman Haley, Sugarwood neighborhood. The Washtenaw, from what I've been hearing from people for Ipsy, City of Ipsy, is the police there are not arresting or charging people for crimes either, because I believe they've been told the same thing, that the prosecutor's not going to charge anything or take it to court, so therefore they're neglecting to arrest or charge these people, and hence they keep doing things and committing things, but they keep getting rolled around, so it's just not here. And when you think, when, when it comes to this election next year, and you see the Washtenaw County prosecutor's name for the state attorney general's office, you should laugh and say, what the hell is he going to do for the people of state of Michigan if he can't help the people of Washtenaw County, okay? Think about that, all right?
Thank you.
And the economy is, from what I've been hearing, if you watch, if I tell any of you, cash out on your 401Ks by silver and gold, the stocks are way overpriced, I've heard we're going to go for a great market recession, stocks are going to go from 6,000 down to 2,000. Stock prices are overpriced by over 150%. We're headed for a big reset in the housing market as well for pricing. It's coming, it's going to be worse than the 2008 crisis that we had, and it's going to hit about 30% unemployment across the nation when that happens. So letting you know, that could be a forecast, and that's what I've been saying, and if anything, go buy silver and gold, and if you do, go to the Old Town Gold and Coin in Depot Town, they're nice new people. But data centers, does the ACM site have access to high-power, high-voltage transmission lines? If it does, then it's a proper site. When I went to the Slane Township meeting for the data center that they just approved, they asked the guy, the CEO, the builder, the company, why this site? He said the high, number one thing is the high voltage, access to the high voltage power lines, they need that. The flat land, and he said some other thing. And the use of this, this data center they'd approved is 1,100 megawatts. The DTE guy there said the total capacity of southeast Michigan that they can provide is 10,000 megawatts. If you take the units to gigawatts, that's 10 gigawatts, and that one new data center is going to be 1.1 gigawatt out of that 10. So when that thing is built, it's going to add 11% to our total electric use of our grid of DTE. And just last week, there was a nuclear conference in Ann Arbor about nuclear energy. The DTE nuclear energy guy said that DTE does not have the money to build another nuclear power plant, which means when they build these data centers and add them to the grid, we, the people, are going to have an increase in our rates.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Hearing none, we will go on, are there any board member comment? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Peterson, support Rowan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned at 7:30.